All righty, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. How so nice to see so many of you in the audience tonight. I know a number of you have a real specific reason to be here, but we also see some folks who generally aren't here, who I think have just come to see what we do this evening and why this is a special meeting this time of year for us. We will do our customary roll call of staff members.
Good evening, everyone.
Council members.
Good evening. I'm Councilmember Jane Welch.
David Smitherman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jean Marie Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
Hi, I'm Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday evening. I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. Thank you. We also have with us our Town Manager, Jane Mears, our Town Attorney, Elliot Fuss, our Town Planner and Assistant Town Director, Town Manager, too many titles, Stacy Tolbert, our Public Works Director, John Hannah, our Town Clerk, Dora Moore, and our Town Finance Director, Pam Orell. Nice of you folks to be this. And all the way in the back, Manning our keyboard and our microphones and our TV cameras, our Communication Specialist Veronica Leisure. Thank you, Veronica. I think we're all up to date. We're on TV 6, we're on Facebook. Everything is going. Holy cow, this is three meetings in a row. All righty, this evening, we're going to begin our meeting with an invocation by our great friend Pastor Tom Lee, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fred Franklin. So please stand and join us if you're able.
Oh God, as we join together, may we be aware of your presence. As we come together, we pray for the people of the world who live in places where there is no peace, and we pray that somehow their peace may be found. We pray for our nation and our own leaders. We're grateful for the many blessings we have, for this community in which we live, for our town leaders who work for the benefit of our community. We pray for your blessings on these people as they seek to give leadership. Give them the wisdom to govern well. Be with us all as we do our part to make this a good community in which to live. Continue to be present in our lives and make us grateful for all the good gifts of life. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think you have our first item on the agenda for this evening, our consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor, you need to adopt the agenda?
Yeah, I bet we have to adopt the agenda, don't we? You know, usually Mr. Franklin reminds me of that, but he's kind of slacking off in his duties tonight. Councilmembers, you did receive a copy of the agenda prior to this meeting. There have been no changes or additions. So if I can have a motion, please to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Now, Mr. Manager, in the right order.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. This is item number two on the agenda. The consent agenda includes item 2A, Resolution 2023-055. These are the financial statements for the four months ended October 31st, 2023. Item 2B, that's the approval of the Agenda Briefing Minutes from November 2nd, 2023. And the last on the consent agenda is item 2C, that's approval of regular meeting minutes from November 9th, 2023.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that generally come before the council. They're routine like our financial reports and our minutes. We take them as a group for efficiency. However, any member of the council can ask for any item to be removed and considered separately. What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to approve. Anything?
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Was it Ms. Foster or Ms. Welch makes the second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Well, tonight, this is an exciting night, I think, for us, obviously, because it represents a transition of one council to another. But we have a special person in our audience. Her name is Olivia Desku. Did I get it even close, Olivia? Very, very close. You're right up here. Very good. Olivia is visiting with The Simpsons, surely. Now, she's staying with you all or you're just her sponsor?
He's the community coordinator for a program of academic exchange which helps sponsor international students. He is from Romania.
Very good. If you couldn't have told by the way, I butchered her last name. She is from Romania.
I can't say it correctly. Your people will...
Thank you, thank you. Olivia, this is such a great night for you to be here because you're going to see probably one of the miracles of democracy, and that's where we have elections, free and fair, and people move off with what they've been elected to and a new group moves in. Never a shot is fired, never is a mob gathering outside. It's one of those truly blessings that we have in this country. Thank you so much for being here. I'm so glad you could be part of this. Absolutely. All righty, PJ, I think you have our Sheriff's support.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come. I can't tell you what an honor it's been, a privilege to serve with this council, and I wish you all the best. Thank you for your support over the last few years. It really means a lot for us in the community policing, as well as the Sheriff's Office. Our total calls for service for November, 553 total calls for service, 289 security checks, 32 traffic citations, and 20 alarms. So the numbers are down compared to last year, 801 this time last year. And you've got to remember that those are self-initiated activities mixed into the bundle of those. And then the security checks, 498 alarms, 26 and 12 last year. Still running about a five or six-minute response time. So I looked at the stats. Community police and deputies are handling roughly around 50% of those calls. So that has creeped up, but you know, people like to take some vacation during the fall. If a Lewisville deputy is out of service or at the jail, whatever the case may be, then his own car will typically step up and handle that call for certain. Not a lot of significant events to really report. So obviously, with this last push before Christmas, make sure that you're securing your packages on your porch, be a good neighbor. So other than that, if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll let you get on to your meeting. Ms. Walker said they have cakes, so I know it's a big rush.
Any questions for PJ?
No, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first of two opportunities you'll have to address the council tonight. It's called our public forum, and we have one now and we have one at the end of the meeting. Is there anybody here who wishes to come up and share your thoughts with the council? This is a great time to do it. Anybody wish to come up? All righty, very good. We'll close the public forum. Mr. Manager, we have one piece of old business I believe we have to take care of.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. This is item number 5A on the agenda. This is Ordinance 2023-048, Contribution to Lewisville Community Assistance Program, or LCAP, in the amount of $2,000. Now, the Lewisville Community Assistance Program is a consortium of area churches collaborating on a food pantry and related community assistance activities. LCAP submitted a request for funding in the amount of $5,000 to, quote, "provide fresh, healthy food to our neighbors in need." The Special Projects Committee met on November 9th, and the recommendation of Town Council as of that date was to contribute $2,000 to LCAP to aid in stocking the shelves at their food pantry.
Very good. Any questions for the manager? Mr. Smitherman, this comes out of your committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smitherman makes a motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All righty, well, you know, we're going to start the parade, I think, or the exit for some of you who've been here for a bit, but this is an opportunity, I think, if not only the council members who will be leaving the council tonight, but any other council members that wish to make a comment, this is a great time to do it. Mr. Franklin, you are never shy.
Well, let me get my pages.
Yes, I figured you'd prepare something.
Oh, man. Bear with me, even though I've served 20 years, I promise not to take 10 minutes, I mean, five minutes or even one minute per year. How's that? You know, after all these years, it's hard to know where to start. I first ran for seat on the council in 1993 because I didn't get appointed to the newly-formed planning board after serving as co-chair of the planning committee that recommended to the council to get into our own planning. That council made me mad. It was my first election loss, but not my last. Ran again in 1995, one by one vote, and I guess the rest is history, as some would say. One thing is for sure, if you look at the council portraits around the wall here, I might have not have mellowed much, but I've definitely aged and I've graded a great deal. Boy, how things have changed. When I first got elected, I was summoned shortly after Election Day to the Old Town Hall by John Whitson, the manager at the time. I was given a key to the front door, and he instructed me that I needed to drop by at least a couple of times a week and check my mailbox for important information that I needed to know. He said it didn't matter what time of day, just keep up with what was being put in the box. Now we have email, the Lewisville Citizen Newsletter six times a year, internet, the town homepage, Facebook, notification systems for telephone, text, and email to inform folks of important issues. You know, after dealing with COVID-related issues and conducting meetings and trying to run the town during this period, we even have a Zoom attendance policy that allows for members to participate when not in town. Ain't technology great? As we did a little bit earlier tonight, our meetings have always opened with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Ever since my first meeting way back in 1995, as the various local ministers, like Pastor Tom, our former town attorney, Bo Huff, and now fellow council members have delivered the invocation, I've always had the same prayer that I whisper softly but audible enough for me and the Almighty to hear. Dear Lord, please don't let me say anything stupid tonight. Thank you. Through the years, this has not always worked for me. There have been plenty of times over the years that I've driven home from town meetings and asked him, "Lord, why did you let me say what I said about whatever, you know, tonight?" His answer has always been, "I was trying to tell you over and over to shut up, and you didn't listen to me." As I ride through town today and look at what we have to enjoy as residents, I remember back to when Shallowford Road was two-lane with deep side ditches and no sidewalks. The square didn't exist, and the first traffic roundabout didn't exist on the Liberty side of the bridge. I'm proud to have served on past councils that discussed the vision of Lewisville and took actions at that time that allowed for the library, the current town hall where we're sitting, the Jack Warren Park, and the Mary Alice Warren Community Center to be planned for and ultimately built. We have the highest elevated water tank in Forsyth County that proudly shouts out our identity as people enter and commute through our downtown roads and enjoy the events on the square and see our town logo. Working in conjunction with North Carolina DOT and with lots of planning and budgeting considerations by councils over the years, and with past, current, and future participation in the 80/20 grants for projects, our town has been able to put into place past, current, and future transportation projects for roadways, sidewalks, and multi-use paths. Ain't Lewisville so much better to drive through and to walk about than Clemmons? Since the first election occurred in 1991, there have been a total of 31 different people that have taken the oath of office as an elected council member for the town of Lewisville. Through the years, I've had the privilege of serving at least one two-year term with 22 of those individuals. With a few exceptions, it has been a fulfilling experience getting to know the others, listening to their ideas, working together for the better good of the town, and the most fun of all, throwing candy to the kids from the float during the Christmas parade, which unfortunately, due to last Sunday's weather, didn't get to happen this year. I want to thank the town's organizing committee and the founding leaders for putting term limits into our original charter, that being four consecutive terms in any combination. I'm honored to do this again for the second time. I believe this provision in the charter is what has directly led to 31 different people serving on the 16 elected councils that we've had since the towns and corporation in 1991. This is what makes Lewisville what it is. With a seating of three new members in a few minutes from now, this group will lead the town to its 35th anniversary. We've had some great managers through the years as the town has grown that have helped all of the councils achieve and implement the direction and vision of the council for the town. It was a pleasure to serve when John Whitson and Cecil Woods were having their tenure as manager. I was involved with the hiring of three of our managers. The first I helped pick in 2003 with the seated council at that time, it didn't work out so well. Jay, Mike, and Ken had to fire him in 2006. The second hire I helped pick was Hank in 2012, and he did a good job for the town for 10 years. James, I can only say that I really hope the third time participating in this process is going to be a home run for the town, and improves my batting average. After getting to know you over the last year and seeing your work ethic, I believe I won't have to worry too much about that. The town has been blessed through all the years with outstanding staff members, from the outstanding events that happened on the square to knowing that every penny, and I mean every penny, is accounted for, to making sure garbage is picked up and potholes are filled, to keeping the citizens informed and updated, to making sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted in the town's records, to making sure the Mary Alice Warren Community Center has programming for people to enjoy. We currently have a wonderful and busy staff. Thank you to all the current and former staff members for putting up with me through the years, Joyce especially. On a personal note, eight years at a time can be a long time. Term limits are a graceful way to step away, take stock of what life opportunities or challenges might be on the forefront at the time. Since 2009, I will have served 12 of the last 14 years. As I try to wrap this up, the last years have been a delight for most of the time and a tremendous challenge at other times while serving. To be able to see the Mary Alice Warren Community Center come to being, to dealing with COVID and its challenges, to dealing with a jerk who ultimately bamboozled the town with a Cracker Box idea, to sometimes getting bogged down for hours talking about boards and committees, it's all been real, but not necessarily real fun. I want to thank everyone that is sitting up here tonight for putting up with me during the last four years. I really appreciate the support and encouragement that I have received from our citizens as I have served through the years. Most importantly, I want to thank my wife, Sarah, for standing by me, supporting me, tolerating me, and the obligations that come with serving as a council member, especially when our children will go. I want to say thank you to you all.
Mr. Smitherman, Ms. Foster?
Ms. Foster wants to go. She's next in line.
I'm a little weeping, so I'm going to let you go, especially after what Fred had to say.
Okay, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to serve on this council. It was a learning experience from day one, and the staff was very accommodating while I learned the do's and don'ts of what a council member role is. I will have fond memories of our retreats, off-site training with the League of Municipalities, and many of our briefings. I will say, if you're willing to learn, there's plenty of knowledge from staff and incumbent council that will be willing to assist you. All right, this point is focused on you, council. Please stay true to your word. There will be instances that are presented to the council that will require decisions based on the good of the entire town, not just a couple of squeaky loud wheels. Whatever decision you make will affect the town and its taxpayers for years to come. One example that comes to mind was the Zinger Project. While the builder tried his best to comply with the rules and requirements outlined in our UDO multiple times, he was still denied approval to build. This result was a cost to the town around $2 million of taxpayers' money. My last point is to remember, we are not perfect, and we will make mistakes. Without mistakes, we cannot grow or mature. We are unique in our own ways, and sometimes it requires more effort to work alongside someone that is different. I am proud to have served with this council. We argued, disagreed, and growled at times, but in the end, we were still respectful of each other, and we will leave as we entered, as friends.
Thank you, David.
I wasn't expecting to feel like this. And this is being televised? Are we sure about that? So first of all, gratitude. As Pastor Tom said, I'm grateful. The people who have supported me, my fellow council people, council members, friends, acquaintances, people that I've just met on the campaign trail, board and committee members that I served with, worked on projects with, staff, first responders, community policing, the deputies. There are too many people to name. There are just too many people to name. But I can say that to a person, whether we were agreeing or disagreeing, you've all made a difference in my life, and I'm really grateful for that. I think I'm a better person for that. So where do you start? I guess at the beginning for me was just happenstance, stumbling into the Old Town Hall looking for a recycling bin. And the next thing I know, after talking to a really nice gentleman, who I ended up finding out later was the mayor, that's how much I was involved with the town, didn't even know who the mayor was. I was involved with the comp plan and providing some input with that. Then I was appointed to the planning board, and next thing I know, I've got some folks saying, hey, why don't you run for council? Having been on the planning board, I thought, well, maybe I can bring some of my perspective to that council opportunity. So I ran and was privileged enough to have gotten some support out there, and then elected mayor pro temp. So it's been a real honor, and I appreciate it greatly. So that said, I will pivot from just the full heart and the gratitude to reflections, just giving us an opportunity to share. I was reflecting on my reflections earlier today, and it came to me that, you know, people typically say, you know, here's my perspective on accomplishments. And I knew Fred would do a great job of kind of going through the arc of what we've experienced and what we've done. And so I could do that and share what I perceive we've moved forward with. And we have, we've done a lot, in spite of a lot of challenges, as Fred pointed out. I'm particularly happy, because I'm sort of a wonky policy type, to have gotten a new UDO or Unified Development Ordinance on the queue. This is a big deal. It's sort of boring stuff, but it's a new law book, in essence, to be more user-friendly for council and staff and people in the community to understand how we're doing things, what we need to do, and have it all tie back to our founding principles. So that's exciting. Strategic planning, we've got a great new leader in James Ayers, who is all about the strategic plan. He's going to weave that beautifully for the new council members going forward. I'm really excited about that. Sorry, Fred, but yeah, board and committee is my jam. That's why I'm here. I was a member of the planning board, and I saw some opportunities to do things even better. And as much as I can crow about our accomplishments, my style is much more to say, but there's still a lot more to be done. James and I were just talking about this. And so I'm all about what tonight is, which is, I'm just one person who's served for this really brief time, and I'm just going to pass my baton. And there's a lot more to be done, and I am a strong advocate for people who don't feel comfortable speaking up, and I feel like we have to be that voice, and we have to seek out that voice. And so engaging the community, engaging our volunteers, making the hard decisions, like David has said, and asking tough questions of ourselves and the people that we're trying to serve, and not taking it personally. So that said, I guess I'll start where I ended, which is, I'm just, I started out as a curious, interested resident of the town, not knowing a whole lot. And in a few minutes, I'll be another chapter of a curious, interested member of the town. And so I look forward to seeing you again. Maybe there is an interested community member giving my voice, but thank you again. I really appreciate the opportunity. And I am so delighted with the staff and where you all are going to take things. I can't tell the community how lucky we are to have them and this council to go to the next level. So thank you.
Council members, anybody else have some comments they'd like to make? Melissa, you are moving up to the microphone.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you to David, Jean Marie, and Fred. As most of you guys know, in my tenure, when I started in 2019 in this role, I had not a lot of experience with politics. I came fresh out of the community into this political realm. And one of the things I have to say about this group of people that's sitting up here is we don't really see things as political. We are here to work on behalf of the town. We're here to work together. We're here to collaborate. And I can say, I've served in a lot of other organizations in various capacities, and I can say that this group really has done just that. They have served this town very well. So it's bittersweet, but I do know from talking with everyone that you guys are going to come back at the podium and have some things to present to us and help us continue to move forward. I just, I'm very grateful to piggyback on you, Jean Marie. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have served with you guys. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Of course. Anyone else? Don't be shy. Jane, looks like she was moving towards saying something. You know, this is part of the job as a mayor. You've got to coach these guys to the microphone a little bit.
He can read us. I really just don't know where to start, but it has really been a joy to serve with these individuals. And I didn't know David really at all, and sitting, you know, beside him, we've had a lot of fun together. And Jean Marie, I've never known anybody that really is more passionate or works so hard, truly. And then Fred, we've served many times together, and because of hair color, he looks a little bit older. We're right in there. But Fred, it has really been something to see us grow together, whether in height and width, you can speak to that too, but in really our comfort level and having some experience, feeling that we can still contribute. And I'll miss each of you dearly. Thank you for serving with us.
Thank you, Jane. Doctor?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just sitting here thinking about us as neighbors. And this community, you know, it's not a terribly large community, but it is a community of neighbors. And I think that when we think of each other as neighbors, that enables us to work on behalf of each other and the community to try to move us in a direction that we believe is in all of our best interest. And that's what this council has done. And that's what this council has done. And you can notice the talents of each of the individuals who have spoken tonight. And they're different, and they're varied, and that brings the strength that we need to the council. I've known Freddie, I guess, for the longest. I mean, we go back a long, long way, to the origins of the town and to the origins of my practice, where Fred and his family, we were fortunate enough to have them as patients. And came to know David much later, but it turns out that it's a small world and a small community, because a young man who was my sister's nephew by marriage knew David very well. And so, David, all of a sudden, knew my name that nobody else around here really knows, that everybody called me growing up, and that's Marvin. So, now David likes to call me Marvin. And then Jean Marie, of course, we've known each other for a bit, and we are in the same neighborhood. But you can see, as she mentioned, that boards and committees are her, as she said, her jam. She's very committed to making sure that we ensure that people who are serving, who are volunteering in the community, deserve, receive the respect of us all, and give them the opportunity to feel like they're valued in the work that they're doing for the community. And that's been what she has been devoted to, and she's worked toward over the last few years. The thing, you know, I've thought a lot about it through the years, in terms of Fred, because of Fred's real devotion to the town. I mean, he is really a child of this town. You know, he grew up here, his family's been here, and his family has contributed so much to the town through the years. But he's a very detail-oriented guy, and has a lot of insights into a lot of areas where, that were not necessarily my strength. And so, I've drawn on Fred for that. Jean Marie has skills in the personal relations arena, and she brings that to bear, and is important. And David is really a plainspoken guy, and had come to us from service on one of our committees. And so, everybody has said, you know, we, and we'll say this to the new council, we always do, is we can disagree, because we're not always of one mind, nor should we be, but if we disagree, we are not disagreeable. And as David said, we may disagree about something, we may debate about something, but when we leave here, we leave here as friends. And that's really true. I mean, I've never really left here being mad at anybody in this group, and I don't believe that's been the case for anybody on the council. And so, I really appreciate the opportunity to have served with you all, gotten to know you all through the years, and all of the work you've done on behalf of the citizens of the town. You have always made the best decisions that you could make, given your perspective on whatever the issue was. And the town owes you a great debt of gratitude.
Thank you, Doctor. Well, as often the case with being the mayor, I get to have the last word on a lot of things. So, let me just briefly sum up. You've heard some of the sentiments that I'm going to express tonight from the other council members, but I do want to take a second and start with David. For those of you who have been watching our council meetings, sitting here tonight or watching our meetings on TV6 or Facebook, you know David is the full plumage peacock among the rest of the council flock. With his bright, multicolored shirts, David certainly stands out. But while his attire speaks loudly, David has been a council member of few words. He listens carefully to presentations and discussions, and then makes contributions that are brief, to the point, and often cut to the heart of the issue. He's been a good balance in our deliberations. David, I'll very much miss the calming influence that you bring to the discussions, the clarity you bring to the issues, and the respect that you always show for your fellow council members, our staff, and our residents. Thank you, my friend, for your service. I know that you will continue to be active in our community, as well as a great ambassador for our town. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Foster. Jean Marie is probably the most cerebral of our council members, often taking us on deeper dives past what might be an obvious conclusion on an issue, to ferret out many of the nuances and add more dimension to our discussions. I think what I'll miss most about Mayor Pro Tem is her good nature, her resilience, and her reminding me of how important it is to go to the extra mile to consider the points of view of all of our residents. Jean Marie, while we may have, on occasion, have proceeded down different paths in our approach to governing, we generally ended up in the same place, doing what's best for our residents. I hope your service over the last four years, particularly with the reimagining of our boards and committees, has been personally rewarding to you. I know it's been of great benefit to our volunteers and to our residents. Thank you for sharing this time in your life in service to the town.
Thank you.
Fred, it really has been a privilege to have served with you, I think, on 16 years of council. You, along with our past council members, Grady Dull, Dan Jennings, you've been our anchors through a generation, holding us securely to our small-town values. I've seen your hair go from black to gray, you're not the only one, and I've watched your kids, JR and Lauren, grow up to be fine adults. Truly a reward for having longevity of service with the council. I'm going to miss your recollection of Louisville when you were young, your stories about cows, tractors, and baling hay, and of course, your unique impassioned perspectives on the issues that came before us. Just think for a minute of all that you have helped make possible in our town, and the impact it has had on our residents' lives. It's a legacy of which you, Sarah, and your family can be very proud. Fred, thank you for all you have meant to the town. I know you will continue to be outstanding in your field. The three of you, join me down front. We have a couple of presentations to make. Folks, it's always a bit sad, but also a time filled with recollections of memories and opportunities that we've had to spend time with people that we truly like, admire, and respect. The three people tonight who are going off to council are those three, three of those individuals to me. We're going to present a plaque. I know this is important. David, this is not a cutting board. David?
Thank you so much.
Fred?
Thank you so much.
And Jean Marie. I truly say this to you all. This has been a wonderful four years, and Fred, we go back a lot longer than that, but a wonderful four years. The last two years have just been amazing, what we've accomplished. We don't do it by ourselves, we do it as a group, and we do it as a team, and we, as Fred would say, we pull the wagon together. So, that's what we've done. Let's get a picture here. Not a departing picture, let's think of it, just think of it as a picture that we can say, we were here.
We were here.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
You know where you go sit now? You become citizens again.
Thank you, David.
Very good. And I would like to invite Julia Puckett and Monty Long, and where's Ivan Huffman, sitting over there, almost hidden, Ivan, to come up at this time. And this is a moment when...
Are you going to have them come down?
Oh, I can do that. So, we want to do all the other council members together.
Yeah, they're all on this.
Sure, everybody come on down. Very good. Thank you, Doris. If you are assisting a council member with their oath of office, please come forward. District Court, we are so glad you're here. Ted and I go back to when he first decided to run for office, and one of the first questions I asked him was, why do you want to be a district court judge? And he said, you know, I think I can do a good job.
Besides, I don't need the image of my wife and girl staying in this office. So, Ted, it's our pleasure to have you here to issue our oath of office tonight.
Thank you for having me.
And Mayor, if you would like to step forward?
You know, this is the most nervous I am in any part of my job, is these swearing ins, because I know how important it is and the hard work that you all do. Mr. Mayor, are you ready?
I am ready.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability?
I do.
Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as mayor for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, he's got his own Bible, all right. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Are you ready? All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Congratulations. All right, Long? Hey, how are you? Are you ready?
Congratulations. Come on up and take a seat.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I'm going to get parched by the end of this, I'll do my best. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Congratulations. Halfway through, getting a little warm up here. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Are you ready? All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Are you ready? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Congratulations. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Good evening. You want to use this one? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as council member for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Thank you, Judge. I say, it's a pleasure to be here. I live spitting distance from here, and thank you so much for having me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to present these oaths.
Very good. All righty.
Ivan doesn't need this.
Your telephone book.
You want a peanut butter cup, too?
Very good. Welcome, new council, returning members, as well as new members. These seats are an opportunity for you to do great things for our community, so we look forward to the next two years of making wonderful things happen to our residents. We have one item of business, or actually, two items of business that we need to take care of. The first is the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. And traditionally, the individual that receives the most votes in our general election is nominated to hold this post for the next two years. Council members?
As has been our practice through the years, I would like to nominate councilperson Melissa Hunt as Mayor Pro Tem.
And it would be a pleasure to second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. If elected, I will not serve, if nominated, I will not serve, or I will not run, if elected, I will not serve? Is that the... Okay, very good. You're there.
Yes, sir. Whatever.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, and you'll need to go back down front again and receive a separate oath of office.
Ready? All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and to defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? Do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Louisville, North Carolina, according to the best of your skills and ability according to law? Congratulations. Not a Mayor Pro Tem.
David, that's two kisses in one night. Is that about it?
That'd be a record.
Council members, I did send out to you, oh, a week or so ago, my names for appointments to our various committees and boards that we have representation on. and our alternate is Julie Puckett. For our Special Project Review Committee, our chairman would be Jane Welch, and members Ivan Huffman and Julia Puckett. And our administrative committee would be members Mike Horn, Ken Sadler, and Monty Hall. Monty Hall. I knew, I just knew it was going to happen.
Let's make a deal, Mike. Want to make a deal?
Let me just get it out of my system now. Monty Long.
Let's make a deal.
Very good. And what's the high board, door number three? All righty, council members, that was for your consideration. May I have an appropriate motion?
I motion to...
Move approval of the list.
To approve.
Very good. So we have, we have Dr. Sadler and Ms. Puckett, who make a simultaneous motion, and we'll give it credit to Dr. Sadler because of his tenure on the council, and Mr. Long makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Dora, I believe you have some meeting dates for us to consider.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can go ahead and make the presentation on that item, if that's okay?
Sure, certainly.
Great. Thanks. And for the audience, this is item number 10C on the agenda. This is the 2024 meeting schedule. The draft 2024 meeting schedule presented for your consideration, council, includes meeting dates and times both for the council, as well as the various boards and committees established by your body. There are a couple of key items to note with regard to the proposed 2024 meeting schedule. First, the council retreat dates were suggested in the draft schedule based on the timing from the prior years, and the space at Mary Alice Warren Community Center is open for those dates. Second, I would like to call to your attention the proposed meeting times. We understand meeting times may have changed in the past for council and its committees. At present, council and its appointed committees may meet at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, or 7:00, depending on the group. However, significant feedback has been received from residents and others regarding confusion over the different meeting times. Therefore, a suggestion was made for a consistent time at 6:00 PM, which would allow those who are working to attend these meetings. This idea was discussed with the various boards and committees, and the proposed meeting schedule is recommended for approval.
Very good. Any questions for the manager? All right, council members, your thoughts?
I have a question. So we are looking at a date, if I recall, Dora, for 2nd/23rd. I see it on the agenda. So we're thinking about doing retreat the weekend prior?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Council members, I know a number of you do have full-time jobs, and you're coming from various places. Does a 6:00 meeting time for our council meetings pose any kind of concerns for you?
No.
I'm good.
We're good. Very good. We'll entertain a motion, then, please, to adopt the meeting schedule.
Make a motion to adopt?
6:00 PM.
The meeting schedule? I apologize.
You can jump in here.
I second.
There we go. It takes a while to get into the rhythm of these things. Mr. Huffman makes the motion, Ms. Puckett makes the second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say I like that time as well, especially for, of course, the other council members and for our staff, who sometimes are here at 5:00, and they may have to wait till 7:00, you know, before the next meeting. So I'm pleased that we're going to have a consistent 6:00.
Very good. Thank you. All righty. Mr. Manager, you have some upcoming events and closings.
You need to take a vote, please.
Thank you. That's what the clerk does. She waves at me and says, "Stop, you didn't do the agenda, but now you got to do the vote on this." All righty. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Now, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item number 11A on the agenda, and my section is for the upcoming events and closings. First off, 11A1, December 25th through the 26th, of course, the Christmas holiday, the offices will be closed. I will note to our residents that the trash service will be delayed one day all week as a result. Item number 11A2, this is on January 1st, of course, New Year's Day, office will also be closed. The trash service will be delayed one day all week as well. Item number 11A3, this is the Christmas tree collection. The Christmas tree removal begins on January 8th. Please remove lights and decorations before placing trees curbside by 6:00 AM that day. There will only be one pass through town, so to collect those trees, so please mark your calendars.
All righty. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. The first item to mention is your council retreat is scheduled for Friday, February 16th, and Saturday, February 17th, at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. That will be held in the Gray Wagon Room and Magnolia Room. More information will be forthcoming on that as well. The next item is the Essentials of Municipal Government. It will be held, the one that was chosen unanimously by this council, will be at the UNC Chapel Hill School of Government on February 22nd and 23rd. As the information comes from the School of Government on that, I'll continue sharing that with the council as well. And lastly, just to prepare you, there will be several board and committee appointments that this council will make in March. Advertising has already went out about the openings of these positions. We are starting to receive applications. The deadline for that is January 31st. This will come to you at your agenda briefing for you to review and to vote on at your March council meeting.
Very good. I do believe we do have Dr. Sadler, who's not going to be able to attend our Essentials of Municipal Government, because he has previous commitments on that date. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now to the second opportunity for you to address the council. Any of you would like to come up and share your thoughts, and your thoughts about this evening? Please come forward at this time. Anyone? Olivia, do you have some thoughts you want to share after experiencing this whole thing?
I think it was a great event to be involved in my work. I've never been to a meeting like this here in my home country, so it was a great opportunity and a delight.
Very good, Olivia. We're awfully glad you're here as well. All righty. There are other comments? Written comments are also, we take written comments. You can send those to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. Townclerk@lewisvillenc.net will make them part of the record of this meeting. Council members, could we possibly have final comments?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
We earlier in the year had talked about an e-cycling event. Has any more thought been given to that, or has it been scheduled, or what's the status?
Yes, sir. That is scheduled in January. It was not on this agenda because it occurs after your January council meeting.
Okay. Is it, but it is scheduled?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Is it possible, then, to get that announcement out so people can start to think about, you know?
Yes, sir. In fact, the upcoming edition of the Louisville Citizen, coming out at the end of December, has actually an article on it. This is the e-cycling event for the public on January 13th. It will be hosted over at Shallowford Square from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The items accepted will include televisions, computers, computer cables, mice, speakers, printers, scanners, and all the other good stuff like that that gets recycled at one of these, at one of these e-cycle events. Certainly, we can provide more information if you call Louisville Town Hall, that's 945-5558. In addition, we'll be putting this out on the website, social media, as well as a Louisville Connect platform with phone, text, and email notifications.
Very good. Council members, anything else?
Yes, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank staff very much for the recent event that we had at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. It was movie night, and there were multiple generations there. My husband and I were able to attend with our two youngest children, and it was just a really festive evening. It was exactly how I had envisioned just the community center in Mary Alice Warren, I think would be very proud of what we have done there with that community. I mean, there was probably at least three generations, if not four generations, of individuals that were in PJs and festive attire. Mayor was the greeter that evening, and it was just a really welcoming... So staff, thank you all very much for all that you're doing for our town.
Ditto. And Ms. Welch brought her grandson and her dog bed, I think, for that night, and they spread out on the floor, so that was, that was great fun. If you notice, she's scratching, that's the reason why. Anything else, council members?
I just wanted to thank all of the folks that are here. I'm very grateful and very humble to be here, and grateful for everyone out there that helped me to reach this point. So thank you so much, and I really look forward to serving our community.
I would concur the same. Thank you so much for being here this evening, and thank you for the support, and we look forward to serving you.
And I look forward to all the head nods that me and Monty are going to share of who goes next. So it's a learning experience for all of us, especially the three of us that are new to this, and we appreciate your support. The learning curve is steep. I'm sure that the town staff is going to have many nights wondering, "Why did they ask that question?" But it's going to happen, so we appreciate you all's support, and we appreciate all the other council members that have done this before and are going to show us the ropes. So we look forward to the community coming out, numbers like this, every other council meeting throughout the rest of next year. We look forward to serving this town the best that we know how.
Thank you, Ivan. So I guess, finally, to our returning council members, my thanks for your continued commitment to public service in the service of our town.